That wasn't fun. Don't do that.
You're just trying to get out of the nation.
Wait, there's a doctor here.
There's a doctor in the house.
Are we recording?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm showing two minutes after five. Let's call a meeting. If anyone ready, you can take their holy.
Chairperson Amy Davenport. Vice Chair Lady John.
President.
Mr. Congressman Tom Decker. Commissioner Sarah Roberts. Commissioner Stephanie Lee Tapp. Off Commissioner Carson Bledsoe.
President.
And Off Commissioner Josh Erwin.
President.
Very good. We'll start with item number one of the consent agenda to approve the special meeting minutes from February eighth.
Okay. I want to say the minutes.
Second.
Vice Chair Lady John. Commissioner Sarah Roberts.
Aye.
Should I approve an alternate meeting? Off Commissioner Carson Bledsoe.
Aye.
Off Commissioner Josh Erwin.
Aye.
And Chairperson Amy Davenport.
Aye. That motion passed. So those minutes have been approved. Well, if you don't want to, item number two, approve the regular meeting minutes from March first, twenty twenty-three. Suzanne, did you see? Am I wrong about where it says motion failed, shouldn't it say motion passed there?
First.
Yeah, so if it's item number four on March first. That was, uh.
It did pass.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's a correction, yeah?
Yes.
I think that we approve the minutes with the correction on item four to amend to motion pass.
Second.
Commissioner Sarah Roberts.
Aye.
Off Commissioner Carson Bledsoe.
Aye.
Off Commissioner Josh.
Aye.
Chairperson Amy Davenport.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lady John.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Let's move on to, so, um, let's see. Oh, yeah, very good. I, I think you guys want to speak before we talk about. Yeah, okay, ready? So we'll move on into reports from officers and council liaisons. Yeah, council member, do you have?
Um, the only report I have is I've placed in front of you a copy of what council had entertained on this issue, even though the ordinance was integrated and was in the package.
Thank you. Anything from you?
I have nothing to report.
What to report? What? Very good. All right, let's move on to our regular agenda then. Um, so what we're doing this evening is, um, we're talking to discuss above-ground pools. So it'll have to be council meeting it for them. And the general concept is, hey, there's something in our ordinances currently that prevents citizens from having above-ground pools. So the motion would let's remove that and replace it with something that allows for above-ground pools. Um, so because that's a change to the zoning ordinances, that council asks for review. Um, we can contemplate it, and at some point, we need to make a, um, provide a recommendation to city council. Uh, well, we'll be back in just a second. We'll, we'll review it. At some time, because of the change to zoning, there will be a public hearing. Um, similar to what we did for short-term rentals, then we will make a recommendation that goes up to city council. Um, we can coordinate with them, and their public hearing, and stuff like that, that's kind of the image that that's where we are. So Nikki or Nino or Joseph Smith, would you all like to provide a comment? Great.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank you all for all your hard work on this. We really appreciate your dedication to our community. We read the city draft with a new pool, pool ordinance, and we agreed with most of the points. I would suggest removing the word disuse from item E to avoid confusion and promote water conservation. So that both residents, these staff understand that, okay, keep the same pool water year to year without needing to drain it each winter. Um, I'd also like to express my concern regarding item D, which requires a new permit every two years, and respectfully request that this requirement be removed from the title of our ordinance. In the spirit of having fair and balanced treatment for both above-ground and in-ground pool owners, note that in-ground pool owners are only subject to a one-time permit. And called neighboring cities like San Marcos, Cypress Springs, and neighboring permit, they do not require a permanent renewal for above-ground pools. And more equitable treatment for the above-ground pool of permit also be one-time. Uh, having a one-time permit also has other benefits. It encourages families to conserve their pool's existing water by removing the unintended incentive every two years to drain their pool to avoid excess expense and hassle of the permanent renewal process. If you bring the problem or not using the pool as much that summer, and then refill them the next year. It's a good measure for conservation. But. It also makes it easier for residents to engage in longer-term thinking and invest in higher-value, long-lasting pools when it's not going to be as of the current. Uh, I'd also like to note that item F already retires above-ground pools, usually removed if they fall under district care or without water. So there's no need for a permanent removal. That would ensure that pools probably need things, that whether it looks to be a valid, even for requiring a two-year renewal. In conclusion, we respectfully request that we strike the word disuse from item D to encourage water conservation. And remove item D from both ordinance requiring a two-year permanent renewal process. Uh, a one-time permanent renewal is fair and equitable. It's in line with how in-ground pools are handled for Wood Creek currently, and it's consistent with neighboring, obviously, she not require a permanent renewal for above-ground pools. This would also remove that unintended incentive every two years to waste water and encourage the present investment power for the last.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. But, um, just for a little bit of clarification, because you may not catch on. So we have our package, and then we have this other document.
Right.
Right.
So we're talking about in the package on page fifteen. Um, when Nikki referring to item B and item E, it's the item B and E in the package, not the item B and E on the newspaper.
It took me a minute, and then I could find them.
I haven't seen the other person.
Yeah. I mean, I had read both of them, but, um, you know, I just kind of thought they were pretty much the same, you know?
To get inspected and get a new permit, do you have to drain the pool?
I, I don't know. I really don't have a pool currently, so, um, I, I'm hoping that, no, it doesn't seem like big waves.
It does seem like a big wave.
Well, the, uh, uh, I mean, my turn to speak would be, uh, in the last city council meeting. Uh, there were two gentlemen, one, uh, they were both there to support the lifting of the bag. Uh, one came up and spoke, and his main criteria was affordability for his family. And the other gentleman, uh, was one of those, like, was grandfather. He had his pool for more than twenty years. They actually know another family has it almost that long. Uh, he's a beautiful pool. He had a deck and whatnot. Uh, his, his, uh, wife had enjoyed it, and their children enjoyed it. When they graduated, now they came back to the grand children. But if this, uh, item D recurrent fee, he would have to pay thirteen times the fee just to kept the pool that long. And the unintended consequences is, he is almost, uh, like encouraging people to go for more disposable mindset. The cheaper pool and whatnot, because they don't know if they want to have a permanent recurrent fee, you know? You really want to get a better filter, build a nicer accessory upper. If, you know, in four years' time, something happened, and you might change your mind, and suddenly you're not keeping up with permits, and suddenly you have to dismantle everything. So that what I'm saying is that, uh, all the people who I actually personally talked to here in Whibley. And in Colgate, where I used to, uh, live, who had permanent pool, uh, above-ground pool, they treat it as permanent. They, they kept the original water came with it. And if you look at the price of water, uh, it is a big chunk of the fee of a pool. It's almost costly as the, um, uh, pool itself. So, you know, you want to keep that water, and we want to encourage that. So, uh, so the fairness for the guy who want affordability, so, uh, you know, don't think this is an ongoing expense you always have to deal with. And it matches the other pool owner to encourage pool conservation, uh, and, and, uh, and try and get better equipment. Uh, the other unintended consequences is, um, this opens, uh, a precedent that you might not want. Uh, we don't know the future of the politics here, we're forgetting. But maybe a few years back, uh, you know, leadership might change, and somebody said, hey, this is a great revenue stream. You know, who would like to have a letter from the city that say, by the way, uh, greenhouses every two years now have to have inspected and a permit? I mean, you know, gazebo or fence, it's, it's the same concept. Other cities don't have recurring fee. When I call around and talk, one of the city, um, I had to repeat myself several times for that lady to understand what Wood Creek was doing, and she acted last second. What, they want a recurring tax on above-ground pool? And they, no, we don't have anything like that. I know it's not tax, but that's how resident might feel about this all. So, uh, uh, as Nikki pointed out, uh, whatever the person who, uh, put for item B was worried about is already taken care of in item F. As they know, if someone didn't use their pool, if, if someone mistreated or just drained or aren't, you have the ability to say, hey, you got to upkeep your pool. You lose your permit. It's already given the power that this is. Thank you very much.
If I can make one clarification. Those are great points. The pool permit would not have to be a fee after two years. It would just be a renewal of the permit, and normally those don't cost anything. It would just be the initial fee like of in-ground pool. But the, I think the thinking of what was originally in this is that the inspection, but you are correct, it is in later. But I just want to make sure that we won't, our, I don't think the intent was to every two years pay the fee. Where there's just a renewal of that permit. And so I just want to make that distinction, but those are very good points.
Okay, Joseph and Nikki Smith, thank you very much. We get it. Um, are there any other public comments or have there been anything sent in to review? Okay, actually, we will close the public comments session, and then we go ahead and commence with our workshop. So this is now kind of a open discussion, uh, for those who are present to, uh, review what we have and, uh, talk about. Frank Forman, I hope we want to do the test. So our, our kind of big picture options are, um, uh, we can review it all night. Evening. If you want, um, if, if we need more time to do more review, we can, um, talk about that as well. But whatever, whatever people need to do, and then whoever decides to make, uh, a permit supportive of the rest of the money.
Okay. I start with this workshop, and so I'm glad that you're considering just not recurring fee or a feeless fee, just like the below-ground pool, which is that, that one, one time.
It can be said, yeah, that, that was my interpretation.
Yeah.
Now.
That's not fair, really.
Right, that, that was my interpretation, but I'll defer to them. When you went against the council, that, that, whatever, I don't know. But if I was suggesting something, or if I was doing the permit, there'd be a renewal after two, or if, if it stayed in, let me put it that way. If it stayed in, there would not be another fee in two years to get another pool permit, once you've already done it two years ago. I think the, and I may be speaking out of line, but I think the idea for that was to, um, to inspect it to make sure that it wasn't in disrepair.
Right.
That was the, that was the good or bad or indifferent. That was the, the thinking, I believe, on the permitting every two years. And I didn't come up with that, so I can't really, I'm sure, but that's my, that's my.
Well, and I thought, oh, sorry, don't do that. Go ahead. Let me just finish.
Okay.
Um, and then, so there is a difference between an above-ground pool and an in-ground pool, obviously. And I do think it needs to be inspected over two years for thank you reasons and fundamentals. But if there's no extra cost for the permit, and if you don't have to drain the water, I don't mind wood, but I don't know that much about in-ground pools or above-ground pools. But I think that that would be fair, is if, um, if they were inspected more often. They're, they're not concrete or in the ground. Um.
I don't know if I can point out what I heard last meeting. In the last council meeting, when they mentioned this, there was a mention, but staff would invoke timely inspection, and how would they be compensated? So that was in mention. So that will also say, well, in order of staff to compensate, then they're probably going to be thinking about a fee, because someone could be sent over to do the inspection. So that's, so, and, and as Kevin mentioned, he can't read their mind, so we really don't know. It's one say a fee to me as a resident, that's a dollar sign.
Well, how often do we inspect a, a below-ground pool?
Uh, when it is, when it is built.
I mean, that's it?
Correct. And there's, and there's a number of different inspections. There's electronic inspection, there's, there's five or six inspections that would happen for a, a below-ground pool. And so there would be some similar, uh, inspections, uh, because you would have to have, uh, electrical out there for the, for the builder, um.
The lights?
The lights, uh, so you do electrical engineering, um, there are probably three different permits. We, we haven't, this is kind of, we just got it, so we haven't gotten into the permitting side yet or anything, but there would be some on the initial base to make sure that it is set up, um, securely and safely for the residents. And then, um, the, the ongoing or the ever-two-year fee would just be a kind of a, a visual inspection, and nothing is, once again, that it's not disrepair. That is what I imagine.
Okay, so, yeah. The point I was going to make is you can have an in-ground pool that is in total disrepair and not safe as well.
Correct.
And the thing is, this relies on the homeowner to, you know, make sure that there are plenty of pools, whether they're in-ground or above-ground. And this, in the case of this, it's above-ground, but that they are safe, you know? Um, with an above-ground pool, you know, you do have, you know, to get into the pool and out of the pool is a lot different than an in-ground pool. But, um, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think that when you have pools in disrepair, your neighbors know immediately that you're swamped with mosquitoes and, you know, snacking water and.
We are currently working on a fake in-ground pool that is in disrepair.
Yeah. So, I mean, I know that as part of our homeowners association, we have a pool, and I know how much that water costs to have it trucked in. And that was ten years ago, and it was seven hundred and fifty dollars per truck. So, um, yeah, so you don't want to have to refill. And right now, we're not allowed to top it off because we're in stage four of our watering, you know, with Aqua Texas. So, um, yeah, that's, that's been a concern too. So, I don't know. I, to me, I, I don't know that it's fair to do that to people with above-ground pools. You're not going to do it to people that are within ground. That's my thought.
I would like to say that, uh, what, what I would like to see from P and Z, I'm going to assume that you often people are going to keep me on P and Z for many years. So you're going to be the continuity, or somehow there's going to be continuity.
Where are you going?
I, I, I plan to be, we may rotate chairs, but, you know, I'm here. Um, uh, one of the things that the, my perception of, of many of our ordinances right now is that they're hot. Someone had a good idea and said, okay, let's write your one.
Right.
And then someone over here, if I got a good idea, let's make it work. And because of that, we have, you know, definitions in this ordinance that don't match definitions in this ordinance. So, so city council has, has put together an ordinance review committee or commission. Um, and, and my understanding is one of, one of our, it's not going to happen quickly, but one of the things that we collectively are trying to do is to bring some sort of continuity. Hey, let's, let's, instead of having these individual pieces that are just kind of slapped together, let's make something cohesive and unified that, that, that. So from P and Z, that's, that's the tone that I would like to set also, is let's, let's, let's try to match things that, that either we have already done or that are already there. Um, and let's put some, um, some kind of continuity behind this. So regarding permits, which, which are just one tiny little piece to this, is P and Z, we should be asking ourselves, okay, well, why, why, why is there a permit? Like, why, why do we need a permit? What's the point of a permit? Is it because, is it because there's a safety concern? Um, is it because it's any kind of generate revenue? Uh, is it because, um, just because someone, it should have a permit? Um, and, and then we need to look next at what, what officer is the city doing? I think a greenhouse is a good example, you know? If you have a greenhouse, okay, well, I got a greenhouse, it's in a glass, that could be dangerous. Do I need a permit for that? No, no, please.
Well, I'm taking sure that the pervious cover.
Is, is that what you're going to want?
Because it affects the purpose.
Okay, fine. Um, so, so, and, and, and pools fall under imperious cover.
Exactly.
So, so if nothing else, you know, we, we could say, well, okay, we've already decided, there has to be a permit, so we can't get away with saying, let's just forget the permit. Okay, so there, there has to be a permit then to keep it in line with, if nothing else, it's the imperious cover regulation. Um, and then, uh, okay, well, what if we say about SDR? We said that one's going to happen every year. Why did we do that? Well, it could be the, you know, we wanted to make it a little bit difficult for people because no one really wants an SDR. Is that what we're going to have at pool? Probably not. Sounds like a lot of people want pool right now, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I don't, I don't have the answer. I'm just suggesting that we.
Doesn't, doesn't the above-ground pool have a much larger ability to affect details? Affect someone else's property rather than.
Like water.
In-ground. Yeah, I mean, the pool above, there's a house behind me, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I would think if that failed, that would be problematic, whereas if it's just in the ground, I guess it's going to see back in the office. Or there's a crack. I mean, I would think that's why they came up with that inspection, but I don't know, because it's a lot of water that's not in the ground. It's being held gathered by plastic or whatever. I don't know what it is. That would be my thought on why they treat them differently. Now, I don't know that, but, um, it would seem that one failed that's above-ground would have a much larger effect on the neighbor's property, you know?
Yeah. Uh, also with, um, I, I think you may have hit on this, but the city doesn't work for free. Um, and, and this, the city council and the city are currently working on, how do we enforce all of the ordinance that we have? How, how do we enforce that? And one of the questions is, how do we pay to even enforce that? So, um, similar to SDRs where the city council, it sounds like decided, well, we're not going to try to generate revenue by, let's say, right now. But, but they do have to cover their costs, right? I think Kevin or, or, man, a company's got to go out there and, and look at this pool to make sure that it's right state, so that it doesn't run or, and, and they don't work for free, so.
Well, I mean, and I was kind of doing a little bit of research, I mean, a lot of time, but there are residential swimming pool regulations.
Yeah.
Yep, and that is different than, you know, I, um, I don't know, pardon you, whatever, because it's a safety issue. And so I think, you know, the basic in what would stick, and everybody's not coming in and changing stuff, is that we stick to those regulations that are already established by the state. And then if somebody, I mean, this, if somebody reports something to the state of Texas, don't they, or regulators go out there and check it out?
I can imagine, yeah, I can't imagine someone from the state of Texas.
What's an environmental, I mean, I know microseptics and stuff, and I know that's different, but that's an environmental issue, and they do flag that and check them out.
So the DA's office really just started that.
Well, from a case camera that the environmental, that's who I call the nurse education when they flag it. I'm sure they have, but I just think it's different because it's a safety issue. And Texas does have their own regulations for regulations.
I would like to point out that Wood Creek does have the regulations. It's the international, uh, sports bar code. We are in that code, or any, or in-ground or above-ground, we just have to ban it. If suddenly they were to remove that ban, that code.
Sorry, no.
Is, is on, and, 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 uh, a chunk of that code is actually here that we got.
Yeah, and I looked at that too, um.
So this is the whole book, and, and the section in your, uh, I'm sorry. The section in your packet is just a section about above-ground pools, but.
Chapter eight.
Chapter eight is, is specifically for above-ground pool, but chapter three is about decking around your pool. Um, so I didn't want to give you the whole book, but this whole thing applies to both in-ground and, and above-ground pools. But it's more than, than what you have, because it does talk about, um, um, plumbing, it talks about materials, it talks about your fence. How big your fence has to be, you know, the lock, and all of that. And so since we referenced this, we didn't have to put in all those bullet points that you got to have, that you got to have a lock. We can do a, uh. Personally asked questions, I think would be more appropriate in that way, rather than writing it to the ordinance, hey, can I have a above-ground pool? Yes. Is there a fence required? Yes, it must be four foot high, and the pickets can't be wider than two and a half inches. And it has to have a lock, and it has to be, it, it all comes from here. But instead of writing down all the little bullet points, we just say, you got to do this, it will have to queue, or having queue, it's A in that character. The major stuff that you need to know to kind of make it easy for residents to understand what is required. If I do have a above-ground pool or in-ground, and most of the, most of the requirements are the same.
Pools come with a great liability too, and Josh's point about pool first, and, you know, you've got to carry a good amount of liability insurance from the animal. I think for that too. So it's expensive.
But I do want to, I talked to five family group hosts pool. Uh, the one with the youngest pool is above ten years. Everyone else has their more than that. Uh, what you will see these pool come from, like Intex is a company that make pool, not only nationally, internationally. Their material is designed to last for years under direct sunlight. That's pretty much what they paint. Uh, so accident can happen and all that, but, uh, unless someone was a, a doer yourself, if they would buy from a major manufacturer, um, the latter. In fact, the, the easy way for a resident to come by is simply stick to one manufacturer and buy everything that goes with that. But everything that they met actually comply with this. All right, and, and, uh, and that's why when, uh, inspector were to come to a house where everything was actually bought from a major manufacturer, and you can show that. It's pretty much be a very quick checklist because all that stuff will be there. Uh, so, uh, accident can happen. Uh, also another thing is above-ground pool, and sharing the, I can't speak for, uh, the resident here, but if they're like most other people. Uh, most of them will get the one that they can get at Costco or, uh, at the one of the discount store, but it's very expensive. And once while they get these guys themselves, and those are, is from that table to here, that's, that's pretty much a, uh, baby. If you don't have, it'd be, uh, a slowly, but somehow if you had like a lightning strike and it broke that pool. Uh. It, it looked like a lot of water, but it, it would quickly melt most people's grounds, unless someone was right next to someone, uh, that's, uh. I think we're discussing the opposite out too, but this is, no, no, uh, then, uh, most likely, uh, it could be probably to have a, a major storm. Most likely, uh, it could be, probably to have a, a major storm. Um.
Well, the narrative sounds pretty fair, and it's left there for inspection in three years, and then the. The word is, and it just seems like, I don't know, something, it, it's not being used for the reason to. Present this repair, I, I don't know, it kind of goes away, I don't know, it's probably.
Well, it's safe, you know, it's used.
Yeah.
What constitutes, what you.
Yeah, it's a beautiful rule, but no one's going in once every forty day, I don't like.
Yeah.
I think it works that.
That's the, so, maybe, but I don't know, it'll be a type of issue.
Yeah.
It says, city shall issue permits to any who apply so long as it doesn't damage the impervious cover that's allowed to carry. Right, the city shall issue this, I mean, that, this shall be done, you know, as long as it doesn't exceed your impervious cover that first. And the, the, the city shall issue, uh, and as long as it doesn't, and make sure. Okay.
This is what House Member Heine wrote.
This is the notes that we were going off, and we, we, but this is the actual.
This is the actual.
Well, now, it, here's, here's what happened, House Member Heine wrote this, and I took her suggestions, and like you said, I didn't care for shall. I don't think, and so I didn't put it in this one, now you can include it, you can pick hers, or add words, or add numbers, or whatever, but I just kind of.
You covered it, you covered that whole thing, you know?
Correct, I made it short, made it short, and I added some more, you know, I put in that we have to follow the state requirement, but we also had a city requirements. Not just the ISA or the International Swimming Pool Law Code.
Okay, yeah, I, I, this makes more sense to me, it's the only point that I was gonna make about, about this page over here, is the first, that the. As long as it doesn't affect, uh, impervious cover, we're gonna issue you a permit. Which makes it sound like the permit is only related to impervious cover.
Correct.
Which makes you then ask like, well, two years later, why would you go back and not, you know, you're not gonna. Change this, this.
Unless they did a deck around.
But they would have to do a permit.
Exactly.
That, that would be a new review of their purpose cover, but, but what Kevin said here, I mean, that's, that's, it's not in that anyway, but. Um, again, this, this probably someone more educated about this can speak, can speak to it, although, for the record, I'm a geology major, okay? In college, I graduated with a degree in geology, so filling a new pool, um, it, it has to be trucked in from somewhere outside of Wimberley. Um, I, I understand the logic behind that, but, but it's all been with aqua book, right? And so, I, I, I would just stop and be like, well, hold on a second, like, you know, I'm drilling down right here, I can't drill down right here and get it, but I pay the truck company. Who's going four miles that way and drilling down and getting it, it's the same aqua, it's all from the same place, you know, so why are we paying that? Now, now, if you say it's gotta come from a different aqua, or, or a different recharge, so, well, yeah, it could end up in Mexico, something like that, but. I would at least throw that out there for, for consideration.
Andy, with what we take for our water, is cheaper.
Cheaper.
Sorry, check.
People, no, people can choose to do that, but, but if you're gonna regulate that.
Yeah.
Down, 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 truck take your water.
Yeah.
For water.
Um, Wood Creek more. I guess.
What do you mean?
They pump too much.
Yeah.
In excess.
Well.
I don't want their home, no, but, but.
My dear book.
Yeah. So, I mean. We had that consideration when we surfaced the pool ten years ago. Do we use the water from aqua Texas, or do we, I didn't, I sat there, put a tin full of paper, and it was cheaper to buy the above water than it was to the under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on, that, that, that may solve that issue.
I was the numbers person, and that was, that was expensive, um, it was a big thing, but either way.
Um, it also seems a little bit, um, incongruous to me, now fortunately, the, the, the Roberto subdivision that is, is not whole for a while, but. You know, the fact that we've got all these times of saying, hey, everyone cut your water, you see, by forty percent, and hey, you gotta pay the truck and water, and then we're saying, but yes, we can build twenty.
Yeah. Uh, they're moving parts out, and Wood Creek more. So, I mean, it's, it, development is here, but this is about above-ground pools, and I, I don't, I don't like ours, and I don't see. Much of an issue with any of it, I agree with it, this is the thing, we're in there, and, um.
What do you think to, to address, um, thank you commentary, so, so let's, let's use this item A.
Yeah.
This is our, what we're talking about right now, unless we, unless we talk about something else, and we're talking about this item A. So, we're getting to have the Nikki comment, then item B, uh, above-ground pool, invalid for two years, sitting on the line. There you go.
Can we ask city council to clarify who we, we're here at, or that, or we do?
So we just make a recommendation to them, I mean, we, this, this, this is our party now, so we can, we can use this, we can change it however we want, we can consider. Stop and say, no, we're gonna recommend, and, and we send a recommendation to city council, and they turn around and they can say. Thank you, or, you know, this looks great, thank you for pointing this out, or if you like it, we're gonna change it back to how we had it. So, um, we don't have to ask them for anything, we, we have the power to do it ourselves.
When, when, when Andy, Andy will library report, once it, if it gets approved, and send that to council, and then that, it will have whatever ordinance that you come up with. And then it can have a recommendation that the, if, if, if the permit isn't there, you know, uh, the planning and zoning commission recommends that the. A pool renewal permit does not carry a fee, or does not have a reduced fee, or. Higher fee, or whatever you want to recommend, and then that way, council will decide, um, how they want to do that, and if, if you're, you know, hopefully they take a recommendation.
Well, I'm, I'm leaning towards you just get rid of that, 'cause we talk about the water cost, and you're not, you gotta make sure your pool's. Working, you're not gonna want to pay to refill it every year.
We should get rid of what?
The reinspection, maybe to you.
So, so just, just say they're, hey, we're, we're gonna permit this, if you have a five, or a above-ground pool, we're gonna permit this, and then, and then you're telling them.
That's how I feel, but, and then if there was an inspection, then it needs to be very small fee, you know?
Yeah.
It just depends on how we set it. The, the fee, the fee mainly, w- once you have the first, once you have the first permit, with the electrical and all of that. There, nobody's gonna go up there and take their electrical, move their pool somewhere else, so it's more of a, once again, it's a visual inspection to make sure that it is not in, in disuse. A lot of the words, just to make sure that it is not in disrepair or without water. That is, I think, that would be the, the, the rationale of doing a. For me, that would be the rationale for, for going out there every two years, it would be to get APS out there, go look at their plumbing again, go look at their electrical.
But, but we, but we don't have that for in-ground, right?
We have the initial inspection, but we don't have a renewal or a renewal, once it's in the ground, it's in the ground, and. We never know about it until we get a call from, and we make sure that it isn't.
Such a repair, it sounds like that we're talking about two different things, there's, there's a, uh, there's a permit, yeah, and then there's the inspection. So.
Uh, I, I meant the, they are reapply for the.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, so there's a one-time permit, here you are, permitted, the, the city will evaluate your, your impervious coverage, that sounds like it's what the permit is based on. If, if you can afford to use that, space for a pool, they will commit to that on pool. And then separate from that, we can say, okay, well, then we love that to be inspected, and then we can take home in-ground.
I have a meeting, and I don't think they need to be inspected, I think, I think, that's just my personal opinion. Share this.
Yeah.
But just like, um, other things that this state requires, first a permit, and then they go out and inspect it before it's actually. Set to it, or.
Before they get the, the, the final approval.
Right, so then it's a key fix it if something's wrong, and then we'll get the approval.
Right.
Right, okay, so.
And, and, and just for your information, the pool inspection, in-ground pools, there's a, a pool layout inspection, there's a plumbing rubble inspection. There's a dent steel bond inspection, and a final inspection including pool barrier and pool coordination. So there are.
That's a one-time.
That's a one-time fee, that's, that's, because what they do is they come to a lot of permit, hey, you wanna have a pool, great, we send that off to APS, our, um, third-party, uh, reviewers. They go out and they make sure that all this is true, they, and it is, and it's done correctly, they say, hey, it's done, done okay. The individual has paid whatever the fee is, and we issue the permit for their good use.
But I wanna make sure of, that, uh, I, I don't know how the process is, but if you go by the international, uh, swimming spa code. It looks what's required for a above-ground pool, but in-ground pool, because it is a construction project, all those things you list is correct.
Correct.
This is not a construction project, you're buying a, basically, something that's already manufactured, that already passed these criteria. Uh, wanna make sure that whoever you use is not gonna like separate each, each one, the electrical part is, you have the water pump and filter in the right place. Doesn't have a, a grounded outlet, that's it, you know, you, you, you buy the right stuff. Do you put it on a slope that, uh, that, uh, that beyond this crazy slope, you know?
Right.
But pretty much everything else is.
Right, and I don't say, and I don't say that this is gonna be the same permit for a, a above-ground pool.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that, I, I know it's a separate issue, but we talk about affordability, so whoever you use. Is not gonna be some crazy, oh, it's gonna be four hundred dollars for that inspection, but, uh.
There, again, there, there has to be, there has to be a permit, there's gonna be a permit. Put that one to that, there has to be a permit, now, now, what the conditions of that initial permit are, literally someone has to go out and, and walk, and, and do it. Initial inspection to make sure, you know, if, if, if nothing else, impervious cover. Um, but after they get the permit to have their pool, then the next question is.
Yeah, 'cause the, the, the permitting process is gonna be covered in here, I'm, I'm what's required, 'cause this does say, you know, for the ground. Our, for the above-ground pool, you know, certain requirements that would need to be looked at.
They're, they're different, right?
Correct, they are different, yes, 'cause it's different, infrastructure, and it's different construction method, and everything will vary. Um, so, you know, we don't have the permit yet, so I can't tell you exactly how it's gonna look, or what it's all impaled to, but it will be a permit, and then, um. Where else to. Inspections, and then, and then, you know, whatever needs to be, if it needs to be inspected, if it doesn't need inspected, but I'll have to get more into the, the code receipt, but that's why we say, hey. You know, the, the international swimming pool spa code, reference that, we reference that, we also reference state code, 'cause state have, um, different regulations. Similar to that, and then we also have the city code, which is your impervious cover, you gotta go with our rules and regulations. And so there's basically three areas that you have to comply with in order to have.
About that.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanna reiterate, I'm sorry, I wanna read it again, that none of the, other cities. Thought it was a good idea to come back and just relook at the above-ground pool again, again, so it, so that's all I'm asking for, but if somehow. Do lean that way, then I will at least ask. Be three years or something a little bit longer, uh, than, than, than two years, and, and the, the reason for that is, in my personal life, my family had. A major health crisis with my mom and my dad, and that's all we could think of, and it took. More than a year of having to deal with that, and the last thing we would be thinking in the start, some permit or some small thing, and I'll basically pay the phone bill for my mom, or the other stuff that she needed. But, you know, if, every two years, you couldn't have a family in crisis, and suddenly they, they didn't notice, and suddenly their, uh, you got this male with a pool because they didn't fill it out on them.
Yeah, I know, I have to understand that, why doesn't ours not be?
The, the above-ground pool?
Yeah. I, I don't see that. Several lines, right, if, if, if you have a giant pool that's there, and, and, and for three years. But, I know.
But I, I don't mind having water in it, and most above-ground pools are designed with a water push out against the wall, is part of the integrity. Of, of the pool, and most, like I say, the people who actually are the user here in Wimberley, other, they take care of it. When I had a pool, I had everything, I studied the PH, I went off to, I have salt table, I use a salt, uh, uh, thing for the warm environment. I took my pool seriously, so, uh, I had a cover, uh, sun cover and a cover on top of that, so, uh, uh. I had almost no, no loss of, of water, maybe one, uh, maybe two backup and three backup a year, because an above-ground pool isn't that big and is that deep. And if you have the right cover and everything, you hardly lose it, and if you got your, unless you're a total newbie, you got your routine down, uh. My pump is set automatically, it comes with the ability, just in automatic, without me touching it, it does, uh, the pumping of a salt add occasionally happens. I'm merely saying that, uh, I'd rather have D out, but if somehow they want D in, could we stretch two years, at least three years or something, because family murder could happen. And that, uh, two years is really short, so something could happen and, and fall into the water bill or something for lack of.
Yeah, that's what I was asking you here. Then you're in question, the pool, and you're gonna refill it, the water, that's.
Well, and if they don't, that, that, you know, E comes into place, if it's not included or, you know, damaged or whatever. E comes into play.
Just first off, maybe.
Here's the effort, well, hopefully. I mean, my, my leaning is to not worry about being repurposed, I don't.
And I just wanna, I'm not, I can't have a team for you to play, I'm not, that's all, yeah.
Well, it's kinda like what you said too, though, is there, there are like, you know, offices that are, that aren't familiar with keeping it up. Um. So the education at the beginning is helpful, and, and we have a, we ask questions, same when they do that first permit, that. Or, you know, if it's not in every two years, but at least the first two years, and then afterwards, maybe. You know, three or four years. Well, that's a good point, it's a new pool, making sure that it's, it's, it's a pair of, right? It's good, bad, it both, it's good, some. So what do we need to do now?
So, we, 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 we have kind of two, two big options, okay? Option number one, if we decide, you know what, we need more time, take this on and look at the regulations and stuff, and, 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 and. Two is, you know, I, I've seen online meetings, that it should be tweaked a little bit, but the city council can review this anyway, and House Member Heine is smart on all these rules, Kevin's gonna be there, and, and, and be there, so. Um, you know, let's, let's move this on, let's get this off our plate, and move on to the city council. Um, and if we're gonna do that, then someone continues to think of, of, you know, that they were planning to make, write it down on your little notebook, so that it helps cool and clear it out.
Can I, just a second, here's kinda where, where, where I see it going, is that, um. You don't have to, you don't have to make the decision on the language tonight, because there still has to be a public hearing. I think what needs to be decided tonight is, is do you all want to call a, a public hearing for the next meeting? Do you think that y'all could come to a resolution or conclusion of adding more language or? of adding more language or deleting language at the next meeting? So that would be one, is to come and up, okay, I think we need the, I, I might, you know, have a vote meeting. You don't have to do that, of course. The second thing is, if you want anything added or deleted in this proposal or in this ordinance for it to be in the package next time, let's say you all decide you don't wanna use disuse, you can stretch that to take that out for the next time, and we can bring back a revised one. When you go to the next meeting for the public hearing, you will hear the, whoever has, wants to speak, at that time, you can still take the document, you can add stuff, you can decide about the, the two years at that time, and move it around, and then you can adopt a resolution next time and make the recommendation to send it back. Does that make sense? Is that kinda what you were saying?
I didn't, I forgot about that. Yeah, we do have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Could I add one other alternative? Um, so, state law allows PMZ specifically and councils specifically to have a joint public hearing if they so choose. I just wanted to put that on the table, so.
Which one's that?
Yeah. Uh, I, I agree, I, I, I'm just remarking some resources, um. The only thing that sets up is, is a rather expedited process, because then we're having, you know, uh, well, I, I think, I mean, PMZ has a public hearing, it would almost be like PMZ's having a meeting in a public hearing, and the city council is having a meeting, and they just have their public hearing sort of thing.
Yeah, we'd see one combined.
Well, all of y'all would feel unified together, and you couldn't conduct the public hearing at the same time.
Which is the part where the public would come and speak, and we all just listen, and then that would end, and then we, as a mega group.
Yeah.
Would have this discussion and work out whatever.
I like that, I like that, you know.
And it would have to go through PMZ first, they would have to.
No, 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 I think, I think we're all together, like, PMZ's supposed to make a recommendation to council, so I guess, if we're all together, you guys, you know, if, you know, we're making our recommendations, you know, here are our recommendations.
I think so.
Well, they could all be at one meeting if you want, so, yeah.
But we can, like, if we want to now, make a revision. Oh, you recommend the revision of the, the disuse.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, gotta make the revision.
If, you have to go to a workshop or something.
Alright.
Yeah. Hold on.
But you could even write it.
And what we're talking about, other people to then make amendments to that motion.
You guys, now, what? I love this.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, I just got off the phone with the attorney, and that, you can't do that. PMZ has to have their own meeting, um, they're gonna have to have their own public hearing, because you all have to have your own vote, and you have to make a recommendation to council. So you can do it early in the day, the same day as council, I, I'll just, I mean, the way it's set up, you would have yours on the first, and then council would have theirs on the fourth. You would have our own meeting, and our public hearing, and our PMZ, what I think is, our public gathering, throughout the long, 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 so.
Does this mean two separate mailing?
No, we would do one mailing, but it would say, please, give PMZ hearing, um.
On such and such day.
Such day, at such and such time, for this, and then in the same letter, it would talk about the city council needing, 'cause you can put different, uh, public hearings on the same letter in one name.
Okay, good. Same work, and that's what the.
Yes, it is, but you, you can do that.
So, I'm trying to think about how I, I would want to present this when we conclude this workshop. So, I, I do like the idea of having, after the first, first two years of the above-ground, then later either going to five years or nothing, but I think it's important to have that inspected, um, after the first few years, 'cause it is a.
For, for, um, for, for safety or for, uh, for what, what is, what is it that you want inspected two years later? Is it, is it make sure that it's looking?
No, it's like structural integrity of the pool, it's beat in, beat by the.
Structural integrity, and that, the people that are actually taking care of the pool. Um, you know, because to me, it's just a different animal.
Yeah.
And so that they're, they know what they're doing, and they're taking care of it, you know, for structural work, is, or, um.
So it sounds like what you're saying maybe is there's an initial permitting and inspection to get it set up, two years later, we're gonna inspect it one more time, everything's perfect, we're gonna check it off our list.
Yeah. I think that's. Fair, but I don't have a word of it, that's what I'm thinking.
Are y'all in?
There's probably more colors, we're discussing how we're gonna word it.
So, so your feeling is initial two-year and then a five-year, is your feeling?
No, just like you do on a, um, in-ground pool, that initial inspection.
Yep, initial inspection.
And the two years later inspected again, and then that's it.
Oh, just have one after two years.
One, one follow-up, just to make sure that everything really is, is code-stetic.
If you as a body want to get out of workshop, so desire y'all can recommend staff to make that change in that document, and we can do that, and then we'll present it in some wording, and then that way, if you don't like our wording, you can change it up and, and do your own wording, but we'll make it.
So our motion did say that we, but we had it on the first, and, yeah, that we've got to, we've got to, you know, tell them what wording we.
Yeah, you, you just need to give us direction once we get out of.
So we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll finish our workshop, and then someone initially can make a motion, however they feel like it should be worded, or whatever they want people to do. Um, and then everyone else has the opportunity to make an amendment, like, well, your motion, your, your motion's on the table tied, you can't get amended by adding code-static to the line. And then that is much easier. And once we're all done with that, we'll vote, starting to get up then, and then we can carry on all the way back down. Um, and then we'll make another motion if they want that to pass, or if we've all voted on that one.
We can get this, you know, done and set out, because you'll have a long time to look over it, do your own research, play with your own words, before the next, before people at the next.
So is there any more workshop discussion that people want to have, any dialogue? All right, then, at, uh, looks like about 5:58, we'll close the workshop, and I am having now an entertaining motion that people may have.
I think a motion that we can adopt, the above-ground pool order with, how to say, with amendment, I would have to.
Uh, no, you, we're, it's not amendment, yeah, because you're making the original motion, okay? This is your party, uh, adopt it with, you know, like it is, except scratch out item B and scratch out disuse and.
That's ridiculous, I would say.
Okay, so.
I, we take a motion directly, that we drop the ordinance with the following amendment, strike B entirely, and remove the word disuse from item B.
Wait, okay. Strike B.
Yes.
And with new.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table currently to, to accept attachment A, this, this ordinance, this proposed draft ordinance, if you will, um, with the changes of being crossed off item B completely, and, uh, item E just crossed off the word disuse, so that's the current motion that's on the table.
I will second it.
Well, and just one, hold on, but, but I heard, does anyone wanna propose any changes or amendments to that motion?
I think.
You, okay, what would you like were amended to that motion?
So I amend, I suppose, the amendment that we don't stress off. That we, um, we do the, the initial inspection when the pool is put in, and then it's re-inspected after two years. And then we know inspection's up and down. After that's approved, but that's it.
So I, I think, and Kevin's gonna help with this. Um, a, a friendly amendment, so, so there can be a, a little bit of.
Once you restate, um.
That it's hard, and they're, gosh, okay, cool, okay, so you're, yeah, so you're making, you're, you're proposing an amendment.
Yours, um, camera was, don't strike out whether we, and need it or change it, that there's an initial inspection and then a re-inspection after two years. Or, or final. Final inspection. I'll second it.
All right, it's open to discussion.
I think we should vote.
Yeah, no one has, no one has.
I was gonna say the comment, that, yeah.
Further discussion? All right.
So this is for.
This is for the amendment, right.
About the two, the initial permit and then two years, that's what you're all voting.
I'll commission Carson Blitzer.
Aye.
I'll commission Josh Irvin.
Aye.
Chairperson Andy Decker.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lady John.
Aye.
Commissioner Cammer Robertson.
Aye.
Well, we love the.
We have any, we have any motion?
I think the vote on the actual, as of, the, yeah, so, there's the end of that.
We're together now, because we're just really looking at this use.
Yeah.
Right, and in main motion, we see that the recommend, in fact, the recommendation was made to drop the above-ground pool ordinance amendment, to strike, uh, letter B and remove the word disuse from the amended D L A.
Mm-hmm. So, it's just picking up the word disuse and making a final tweet on it.
So we're all done.
We'll raise the vote on that.
Chairperson Andy Decker.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lady John.
Aye.
Commissioner Cammer Robertson.
Aye.
I'll commission your Carson Blitzer.
Aye.
I'll commission your Josh Irvin.
Aye.
Very good. Um, and now, I believe we need a motion to hold a public hearing at our next. If we need it.
Looking to hold a public hearing.
Have a meeting? Do you have enough money to come in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we will.
I'm hoping so.
Yeah, we, we'll go in next week.
Okay.
And what we will, if it does pass, we will do one for you and then one for city council on the same letter, same and.
Yeah.
No, and we're gonna do it on the, in the June, it'll be June 14th. Oh, that, well, no, it's gonna be, okay, for the.
So they wanna have their next meeting.
No, they're gonna have their next meeting June first, and then the public hearing for city council's gonna be June 12th.
Okay, then you should figure out what, if you have an extra date in mind, for.
Yeah, we, we weren't able to do that on that, I think we tried. Um, to be careful, we'll have enough time to request the public hearing, but.
We can go ahead and, and we can go ahead and put it in the paper.
Gotcha. Okay.
It doesn't have to be a formalized thingy, because it's legislative.
So the motion on the table now is, uh, that PMZ hold a public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is June 7th.
June 7th.
June 7th.
I got. I was gonna say, yeah, I'm like.
Need any discussion on that before we vote? All right, let's vote.
Vice Chair Lady John.
Aye.
Commissioner Cammer Robertson.
Aye.
I'll commission Carson Blitzer.
Aye.
I'll commission your Josh Irvin.
Aye.
Chairperson Andy Decker.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, we have, this booklet here, right?
Yeah.
So this, you all have access to this, if you want it, um, all the ordinance and codes here.
Unrated.
Um, we also have our package, and then any, any, will you all come up with the revised wording?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that, um, in this week versus next week to send it out to you, and then so the next meeting, public hearing, y'all can finalize, say this is what we really want, let's see all the wording correct, or you can change it again, you know, if, or whatever, and then, um, if everything goes the way I think it would, then it would be recommended to go to council, and then it would be on the June 14th, council meeting for, then have the public hearing, and hopefully for then to.
Okay.
Cause I have three or four of our regular agenda. I would say, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I move it to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Andy, Olivia.
I appreciate your comment, you guys.
Yeah, I think, really appreciate it.